Yes. This is Palopinto Street and this is Ojo Street and then Summit comes around that way. And I'm asking.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm asking for the vacation of Palopinto, for Block 1, where my cottage is situated. I do have.
Finish this one.
I'm through with that one. You did good.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're gonna keep you. Okay, I don't have a copy of my survey which shows. Which shows. This is my survey. And this is Ojo Street and this shows Palopinto Street. And as you can see, my cottage is sitting in the middle of Palopinto Street. And what I'm asking is, the way the streets are plotted out, it all goes down into the holler and Lima Street, I'm asking for the vacation up to Lima, the Lima Street Alley. I have all my neighbors that touch this piece of property. They have signed a petition agreeing, that they agree with this vacation. I also have a legal description that was written up by the title company down the street. And I have, what else do I have down here in this wonder? I also have a copy of a lease. We have a lease that was initiated with Mr. Swett back in about 1932. And when we bought the property in 2003, that lease rolled over to us. So I have a lease on that property till 2032. But I would like for y'all to vacate that street. Parks has, Parks agreed. The utilities, all the utilities have said it's not, it would not be a hindrance. And if you're consideration, I'd appreciate it. Any question? Yes, ma'am?
I think I would have to personally have to visit the site.
Okay. When would you like to do that?
I don't know, but I would just feel that I would have to do that.
Okay.
Anybody else want to go see it?
Oh, sure. I would like, I appreciate that.
Is that, was that your question?
No, it is not.
Go ahead.
Who is the neighbor on the other side? You own property on one side of Palopinto Street?
I own property on the middle of Palopinto Street.
So who owns?
The Gilded Lily is on the other side of me. And the Gilded Lily is, shares its one little lot with another house, who is Rick Stone. And then the property right behind it is Harlan and Jeannie.
Heather. Heather.
Thank you. I forgot that.
May I ask the city attorney a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Generally speaking, when spaces like that are vacated, are they not generally split between the neighbors?
They are normally split between the neighboring properties.
But her neighbor is?
If the, if the city decides to do this, the neighbor would be have, would have to be given the option, or neighbors, depending on, I think in this instance, there's two. And additionally, our city code calls for a purchase of this property at the rate of $200 per adjoining.
At least.
At least.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, the neighbor has first option.
I would, I would move to postpone this to our first meeting in July, so we have some time to research it.
Do second?
I'll second, pal.
Motion made to postpone, motion made and seconded to postpone until the July meeting. For time to do research, council to do research on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alright, so it is postponed till the July meeting. Thank you, Jen. Case count number five. Number six, Digital and Electronic Signs Resolution by the Planning Commission. Do we still have anybody here from the Planning Commission? Okay. Okay. Do you want to make sure there's somebody here to discuss this? Or you want to open it for discussion now? It was a moratorium set on this thing, I believe, two meetings ago for six months. Is that not correct? So. There's nobody here. Does council wish to go ahead and open this for discussion? I mean, we have, we have the statements from Ms. Blankenship at a planning here, if you want to go through these, about the sign ordinance. So, we'll open it for making motion to discuss?
Subnerved.
Second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll find the appropriate one here. Okay, here we are, right on top. Everyone should have a copy of, Mr. Powell?
I just have a quick question on the agenda. It says the resolution and Ms. Blankenship gave us an ordinance. Has that ordinance or resolution gone to the city attorney?
I have not seen it. I would.
Yes, sir.
I would move that we submit this ordinance to the city attorney for his study and move this to our first meeting in July.
Second.
Made and seconded, refer to Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Is it gonna be enough time for you for the July meeting?
Yes. Unless it's 400 pages.
One page.
One page, yes.
Alright, refer to. Okay. Alright. With that.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Clarification, is he going to be reviewing the ordinance we got or a resolution?
Can you make that determination whenever you read through this, if it needs to be one end or the other?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll look at whatever they present.
Okay. Any further? Okay, we'll move on to number seven, which is addition. This will be the emergency ordinance on the slide. Okay. Pull it out here. Motion to discuss?
I would move that we give the resolution a number and read it.
This is an ordinance?
Yes, an ordinance. I'm sorry, did I say resolution? No? It is an ordinance, yes, sir.
Oh.
Second.
Okay.
To discuss.
Alright. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alright, let me kind of preface this thing real quick. Everybody has had a chance on the shrooming to go down and look at our new landslide on Spring Street, right in front of Grotto Springs. As I made mention earlier, that this has, according to the engineer, has displaced approximately, he said approximately because he was using a handheld calculator, 55,000 cubic yards of earth was displaced within a matter of an hour. It was slowing the process, but once it got rolling, it continued on. The street department, the Public Works Department was on it in a heartbeat. They made contact with an emergency contractor, Mr. Lowell Johnson of Lowell Landscaping. And he also has another business of, Mr. Duncan, he owns a quarry out on 187. I'll just put it that way. They got on it, they got their equipment in there, started stabilizing the ground, moving dirt, taking out trees, stacking logs, because all this is private property, which holds up Spring Street. And places Spring Street was cut under about two feet. So right now, it is still hanging in the air. When this ground slid, it also took out a section of 8-inch water line on Spring Valley? No, you, bless you. Spring Valley, it is an access to, Spring Garden. Man, they can get that right. You know, it's the road that the 8-inch water line was in. It runs behind, parallel Spring Street, all the way from behind the Ryder's Colony. Goes back in. We lost, I think, approximately 200,000, 300,000 gallons of water when this thing popped, because it's separated by about nine feet. And it was, it was just open, an open cavern at that point. To date, as of this morning, the calculations from Mr. Johnson were $15,677. But that was this morning before they started bringing rock in. Now, by state law, I understand that we are to put out a bid on this thing when it reaches $20,000, or if it's estimated to be $20,000. It may be now, but this morning it was still under the $20,000 mark. So, with an emergency ordinance and compliance with state regs, which has nothing to do with FEMA yet, I'm submitting this ordinance for your perusal and your approval, and you know the situation. And this doesn't even address Grand Street yet. Grand Street will be another issue off of an emergency ordinance, because it, as it dries out, it stabilizes a little bit more, even though there is still water seepage from where the slide was. So, here it is in front of you. Discussion, Mr. Powell?
Well, wouldn't this ordinance, if we pass it, cover Grand? With the way it's worded? As far as the non-competitive bidding?
Grand will be for 150,000.
150,000 is strictly the.
This is the area we're working on now for stabilization of Spring Street. And if Spring Street goes, that whole wall goes and Grotto Springs goes with it. And probably the hillside behind it, that makes up the spring. Because apparently, from what we found out, the spring drains in the ground, runs underneath and comes out on a rock bluff approximately 15 feet from real level, which keeps the entire shelf, shelf rock wet. And as many of y'all seen today, there is a running spring just about 10 feet from the drain box. Now, the drain box does pick up some of it, but that's mostly for road drainage. Drainage coming off the hillside. The spring itself has found its own path, as they usually do. Yes, sir?
Well, if we're gonna do that, then I would recommend we take the references to Grand Avenue out of the ordinance and start the spelling and bidding.
Okay. Yes, my understanding from Mr. Johnson was that the 150,000 is just for the work he's doing right now. And he's, you know, bless his heart, he's been there every day. Whether his crew's been there or not, he's been there every day. And he's given us excellent rates on labor and materials, so. Had it not been for him, we'd probably still been trying to cut trees down with old chainsaws or something.
Well.
Ms. Balance, go ahead.
Were you, were you done, Mr. Powell? First of all, if we're gonna do this, it needs to be, does need to be competitive bidding. It should be competitive bidding.
Bidding, okay. Close enough. Thank you, ma'am.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Johnson Landscaping and Ozark Stone are local.
Yes, ma'am.
Entities, yes?
Yes, they are.
Would there be, would there be any other local entities, or even not local entities, who, would there be anyone else who would be able to do what we need and do it as well as Johnson Landscaping and Ozark Stone? That you're aware of?
The only other contractor I'm aware of, this, Mr. Johnson was on our emergency list. He was first contacted by Dwayne as an emergency contractor to get on this thing and do something. I haven't seen the list of other emergency contractors, so I cannot answer that. The only other gentleman I know that has equipment to do this is Mr. Johnson. Huh? He wasn't available at the time, according to Mr. DeVito.
Well, I just think we're lucky that we have somebody that has a quarry locally and has, I mean, some of the rocks are just unbelievable in the size that they've been dumping in that hole, and it's been swallowing them up pretty quickly. He's been a good person for the city, that he's tried to cut deals for the city and give us the lowest prices. Some of the private contractors I know that have worked with him, you know, they're just tickled to death that we have a quarry so convenient to the city. Just the distance in hauling is so short. He has the equipment. He has ready access to what's needed with all the stone. I just can't imagine anyone else that would even come close to being able to provide this for the city. So I would move that we assign a number to this ordinance and place it on its first reading.
I would second that.
You had a question, apparently?
We had a second here, so we could go into discussion.
Okay, made and seconded for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Under the circumstances, I'd still like to see Grand Street taken out of the ordinance and also recommend that Public Works to alleviate any concern of non-competitive on Grand, might have the time to see if there are any other contractors while this work's being done. And go ahead and address Spring Street alone.
Okay, my understanding is that Grand Street will be a separate issue that you will have to readdress at a later time for a separate bid. And if we remove it from here, which it's totally up to you guys, and deal with just the Spring Street issue, then we can do that by amending the ordinance as is.
Seems reasonable.
I would suggest not taking all the Grand Avenue issues out of this. Now, maybe the repair portion, but because of where the slump is and it's coming over onto Grand, I would leave some of that in there to establish the emergency, because it's the two streets, both being out of commission, that creates more of an emergency than just one or the other.
Three.
Or three.
Yeah.
But the two, that emergency vehicles have got to get from one side of the town to the other, they either use Spring or Grand typically, through that area. And with the language for both, take out the repair language potentially, but leave in the whereas portion, that the two of them are out of commission due to this slide that is over there. Because it is, Spring Street is sliding down into Grand.
And in case.
In case anyone ever wants to. Yeah.
Right.
Mr. DeVito?
I would make an amendment to my motion that we strike from the second paragraph, the words "and overlaying Grand Avenue."
Should be stricken?
Correct.
Was that, was that a motion?
I believe that's the only time it's mentioned.
Well, it's mentioned down in the emergency clause.
It's in the emergency clause.
And also, and also it's in the title.
Okay.
Was that, was that a motion, Mr. DeVito?
That was amend, that was amending my initial motion.
Okay. Just for, for the sake of discussion, I would like to see it stay where it says, "Whereas due to natural, recent natural weather-related occurrences, the earth-supporting Spring Street and overlaying Grand Avenue has begun to move." That's descriptive. I think it might be good to leave it there. But in the title, where it says blah, blah, blah regarding support and repair of Spring Street and Grand Avenue, perhaps that would be a good place to remove Grand Avenue, because it says regarding support and repair of Spring Street. So we're, we're trying to support and repair Spring Street right now, but not Grand Avenue? So to me, that is where Grand Avenue should come out.
Mr. Weaver?
I think that that is, that would be appropriate, yes. Because the money's not gonna be spent, it will be, in a manner of speaking, spent to keep Grand Avenue from being shoved on down the hill by the Spring Street portion of the slide. But the money's being spent to repair the Spring Street and its portion of the slide.
To support and repair of Spring Street. So to me.
But leaving the overlapping, because the material it is sliding down.
Is indeed overlaying Grand Avenue.
If it continues to go, it's going to push Grand Avenue on into the hollow.
So could.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish your statement.
So could we agree perhaps that it, Grand Avenue needs to come out of the title? And where, and it was here, which probably should stay, because that's descriptive.
Yeah.
And where else was it? Down here?
Marked.
Do, did, wait a minute, Spring Street and Grand Avenue. Perhaps in Section 3, it should simply say that due to the immediate need to deal with reopening Spring Street to both emergency, leave the Grand Avenue out of there.
Mr. DeVito?
I don't know that I received a second, so I'll withdraw my amendment. I think we ought to leave the Grand Avenue in, under the Section 3 because of the emergency that both streets are presently blocked. I agree that we should remove and Grand Avenue from the title of the ordinance. So I'll make a motion to remove and Grand Avenue from the title of the ordinance.
Second? Okay, made and seconded for removal of Grand Avenue from the title of the ordinance? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stricken? Okay, but we did leave in and overlaying Grand Avenue in the first paragraph?
Yes.
That's correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we made the spelling correction on bidding?
And also where it says thesees, that should probably be just these.
I'm sorry, where is it?
Second par, second whereas paragraph. Whereas thesees are actually these.
These are well-traveled.
Well-traveled.
Alright. Were those corrections and amendments?
And, excuse me? We left it in Section 3, Grand Avenue in Section 3?
Yeah, advice of attorney that we leave it in there.
I would agree with that.
No.
Yes? What do you think?
In Section 3, leave, is that, was that correct?
I think that was the motion, yes.
To leave, okay.
That was the motion.
Any other changes, deletions, additions to? Okay. The vote on it is amended. All in favor, say aye?
You have to read it first.
Oh, you have to read it, okay.
You need to read it.
Ordinance number 21.
Excuse me? Do you need to assign a number?
Oh, my apology, 2138.
2138. Okay.
Ordinance number 2138, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for ground and street stabilization work regarding support and repair of Spring Street and declaring an emergency. Whereas due to recent natural weather-related occurrences, the earth-supporting Spring Street and overlaying Grand Avenue has begun to move, causing each street to become unsafe for use. And whereas these are well-traveled streets within the city of Eureka Springs, vital to the efficient flow of traffic, including emergency vehicles. And whereas the Public Works Director has researched the cost and availability of firms capable of making the emergency repairs needed to prevent further damage and reopen traffic flow. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of Eureka Springs does hereby waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Arkansas coded code annotated.
I'll make that change.
And the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to allow for the contracting by the City of Eureka Springs with Johnson Landscaping and/or Ozark Stone in an amount of up to $150,000 for stabilization and repair. Section 2, that the Finance Director is hereby authorized to transfer said money sums from the Street Reserve Fund to cover said expenses.
We don't read the emergency clause until it's time, correct?
I would move to approve ordinance number 2138 on its first reading.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. DeVito?
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2138 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Second. Made and seconded, all in favor?
Discussion.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Can we have discussion here?
Yes, ma'am.
Soon as we vote.
Yeah.
Discussion before or after the vote?
Are you discussing the, to read or discussing approval?
Approval. Okay, thank you.
So you'd get it, do it after the vote? Because the vote is, vote is to read, and then you discuss.
You ready? Okay.
Mr. DeVito?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Balance?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
5-0.
Okay, motion carried, found zero. Ms. Balance?
No, now you need to read the title, and then you can open discussion for approval. Or whatever you need to do.
Okay.
You just voted to read it.
Not the emergency clause.
Just the, just the title.
Okay.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2138, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for ground and street stabilization work regarding support and repair of Spring Street and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Balance?
Just a couple of quick, again, grammar things. Weather-related should be hyphenated?
Okay.
Well-traveled in the second whereas paragraph should be hyphenated? And probably in the first whereas, the earth-supporting Spring Street and overlaying Grand Avenue has begun to move, comma, causing each street becomes unsafe for use. That's all.
Okay, any further, Mr. DeVito?
I'd move to approve the reading of ordinance, move to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2138.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This will be by title only?
I have to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2138 on its third reading by title only.
Second?
Second.
Okay, made and seconded, all in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Do we then do the emergency reading after? Will you give the emergency clause?
After the third.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Ms. Balance?
Since this is truly an emergency, I will vote yes for the third emergency.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
5-0.
Alright.
I would move to approve ordinance number 2138 on its third reading.
You need to make.
Second.
You need to make your reading first.
Oh.
She needs to read the title.
Oh.
Sure.
Okay, I'll go, I'll read it. She's writing. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the ground and street stabilization work regarding support and repair of Spring Street and declaring an emergency.
Read the title, or the ordinance number also?
This will be ordinance 2138. My bad.
Okay. Move to approve the third reading of ordinance 2138.
I second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I would move to read the emergency clause.
We second.
Read it.
Read and approve.
Read and approve, I'm sorry.
I second that.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did we not have to?
That one should be roll call also.
Roll call, okay.
The emergency clause has, the clause has to be roll call?
Should be, yes.
Okay. Works for me. Just more defended.
Good.
Let me read.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Since this is truly an emergency, I will vote aye.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
5-0.
Now we read it.
Now we read it.
I'll let you read it.
Emergency Clause, Section 3, that due to the immediate need to deal with reopening of Spring Street and Grand Avenue to both emergency and non-emergency traffic within the city, for the health and safety of the citizens of the city, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage by the Eureka Springs City Council and signing by the Eureka Springs Mayor.
So it is.
So it is.
Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Citizens appreciate it, Mr. Johnson appreciate it, and I appreciate it. Let y'all know, I've been there every single day checking on the thing, watching these guys, staying with Dwayne, staying with the engineer, staying with, even the arborist. He has stated that there may be trees available to the private property owners, which this is, but it supports our street. That maybe, there may be some trees that they can come in and replant.